All right. I'll call this meeting to order. Mike, if you can get the roll.
Helwig?
Aye.
Holland?
Aye.
Humphrey?
Aye.
Jenna Wine?
Aye.
Lettler?
Aye.
Price?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor, call your wise.
Aye. Steve, if you would lead us in the pledge.
Certainly. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to adoption of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda that anyone would like to make at this time? Move the agenda.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to adopt the agenda. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye at the roll.
Helwig?
Aye.
Holland?
Aye.
Humphrey?
Unmute Brian.
Nope, you're still muted.
Still muted. There you go.
Jenna Wine?
Aye. Aye.
Lettler?
Aye.
Price?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor, call your wise.
Aye. The agenda is adopted. Visitors to be heard. Are there any visitors to be heard on any issue not on the agenda?
None here at City Hall.
Okay. We'll move on to our only item, discuss opening of park playgrounds and basketball courts. And John?
Thank you. Excuse me. As the memo that you provided provided some of the history with regard to the article, this item before you, as you might recall, the facilities were discussed first at the April 6 meeting and the closings followed that particular meeting on April 6. Since then, it's been discussed at several meetings since and in the memo, I gave you kind of a list of the different times that that has been before the city council. We did since Monday receive a request from three members to have a special meeting to discuss the reopening of the playgrounds and basketball courts in our city parks. We did receive three different email comments that have been provided to the city council in your packet that came in before 5 o'clock today. Those have come in since the meeting has been announced, excuse me, and the agenda has been published. And I would speculate the city council members over the course of the last couple weeks have received several other comments beyond those three, but those were the three that we did receive. Jim Gobish, our Park and Recreation Director is here in the audience and he has some information, Mayor, if it's okay to present to the council on the status of some of the other South Dakota communities and a current statement from the National Park and Recreation Association with regard to these items.
Go ahead, Jim.
Good evening, members of the council. As Mr. Prescott did state, along the journey here that we've been in since April, I've always kept you informed of what the South Dakota Park and Recreation Association communities have been doing in their communities. Currently, there are no other South Dakota parks and Recreation Association community members, communities, I guess, that have their playgrounds or basketball courts closed, outdoor courts. Some of the internal ones, I can't speak for as far as community centers and whatnot, but the outdoor courts and playgrounds are all open that we're aware of throughout South Dakota. The majority of them are not doing any additional sanitizing than what they typically would do, and that's basically cleaning up around the playground. There's no special precautions or anything with the exception of signage is placed up around the playgrounds, following kind of along with the National Park and Recreation Association saying that playground usage is a medium-risk activity. The rest of the CDC kind of guidelines go along with that as far as if you don't feel comfortable, don't go to the park. If you feel sick, please do not use the park or playground facilities. And that kind of correlates with any other of the activities that they're doing. Social distancing, please wear a mask if you're going to be out there, if you can't keep you or your child away from other childrens or people. And that statement from the National Park and Recreation Association came out, I believe was on March 31st was the last time that that came out. And they've kind of stuck with that statement from that time to today.
Is there anyone at City Hall that wishes to speak to this?
Yes, we have a gentleman that would like to address.
Okay. Make sure to state your name and address and you will have five minutes to speak on this.
Thank you for having this meeting. My name is Todd Nelson. I live in, on Jane Street here in Vermillion. The last couple of months, I have been able to take my children to South Dakota community playgrounds and basketball courts, but not the ones that are a block away from my front door. And speaking with other parents and seeing communication on social media, many are actively leaving Vermillion to get access to parks and outdoor activity, including my own family on multiple occasions. It has been difficult trying to explain this to people outside of town. We can have Thursdays on the plots, which I fully, fully support, but not a swing set. Thankfully, the schools in Vermillion apparently became tired of waiting for this council to vote to open playgrounds by opening theirs to the public. At some point, consistency between communities needs to be part of reopening plans. It is not only right for Vermillion, but it's also the neighborly thing to do. If a Vermillion parent is concerned about going to a city playground with their kids, they can choose to stay home. If you don't like that argument, then I ask if you would prefer we keep going to Yankton or even Sioux Falls where they have many, many times more cases than in Clay County. As individuals, we need to be allowed to make decisions for ourselves. Many parents are frustrated and left with few options to spend a summer day or evening within Vermillion. It is even more frustrating seeing how many pools opened up around us with smart, simple safety measures. I feel for those with infants and citizens with underlying health conditions, but Vermillion is definitely not in a bubble. I was impressed with the business owners who came here in solidarity several weeks ago. However, watching that specific meeting, the mention of legal action is the only thing that caught some people's attention and changed some votes that otherwise probably would have been cast differently. Statements being made by some in this council in recent meetings that they still wish they could implement a similar emergency ordinance like the one passed in March is close-minded and to the devastating effects that would have. Hopefully, residents represented by these individuals are hearing this and speaking up. And the fact that we are having this special meeting tonight is a sign that is happening in greater numbers. The issue of a closed playground or basketball court is absolutely nowhere near the same level of seriousness or importance as someone's business or job, but it is still important to parents with children in this community. For those in this council that have voted repeatedly to keep city playgrounds and basketball courts closed, I ask that you begin thinking about and representing all residents of Vermillion. The next time you are asked to vote on this issue, I hope that you vote to open. Thank you.
Is there anyone else at City Hall that wishes to speak on?
No, the only three comments that we received through email to the city were provided in the packet and then I think it was sent to you at 5:00 once the time had closed.
Thank you. Turning it to the council. Rich?
This is for Jim, please, Jim Gobish. Jim, do you have the signs you were talking about? Are they available that we can put at our playground spots?
Yes, we have signs from when the playgrounds were open prior or when COVID kind of reared its ugly head, we had those out there that these are not sanitized playgrounds. Please wash your hands. It's a general statement, blanket statement, but we do have the signs already and are ready to go to be put up if playgrounds were to open.
Great. Thank you.
Other comments from the council? Steve and then Catherine?
I want to thank everybody for coming up for this meeting and, you know, I apologize that I had certainly meant to put this, ask that this be on the agenda at the last meeting, but as you all heard, I was not able to do that from the, from our legal counsel. At any rate, I am open to opening playgrounds at this point. I, the Texas, I think it's Texas Medical Association or something, recently came out with a risk assessment of activities and playground usage for an hour was a relatively low-risk thing. We have had two weeks of an average of a little over one case per day in Vermillion. So I think our cases are relatively low right now. And so when I was considering this issue before, the last time we met, I had voted no to open up the playgrounds because we were experiencing a spike in cases and did not think that that was a good time to expose the playgrounds to a higher risk. That spike has leveled off and gone down, so I am now open for opening playgrounds. So that's my rationale for my vote today.
Thank you. Per the idea of a spike, I think we'll probably be seeing one after the July 4th weekend. I think it's likely that our community and many communities around the state and the country will be experiencing spikes as a result of that. I sort of have a question for Jim. One of the concerns that had influenced many of our choices not to vote to reopen the playgrounds was that Jim had expressed that he and his staff did not have the capacity or the ability to monitor and sort of police the playgrounds, as it were, to make sure that people were abiding by social distancing guidelines and just leaving, leaving it up to posted signs in locations that are highly utilized by children who don't read signs, you know, seemed like not a good method to enforce social distancing. So I was, just wanted to circle back with Jim about that, about the CDC guidelines do say for park administrators that one of the things they should be doing is to make sure that people are socially distancing at the park through monitoring those areas. And I wanted to see if they're, what his opinion was on that.
I, I think my, our point, or at least my point at the parks, we do not have the staffing ability to police that. And police is a strong word, but we'll call monitor those situations there. I think some of the things that you might have read from the National Parks and Rec or from the CDC, other communities do have playgrounds that are, for no better terms, lockable and you can open and close, enclosed areas. We here in Vermillion do not have a park that has a gate around it that we could have like park hours where that'd be a little bit easier to at least, say the park's open from 7:00 to 10:00 o'clock or whatever it is. We just don't have that ability. And I still stand by that we just do not have the staff to monitor and to enforce social distancing. It just is really an impossible task for us to do for as many hours as a day that the parks are open. So I would, I would stand by that and said, it's just going to have to be left up and have the trust and faith in the public to monitor themselves and to police themselves in that regard.
Other comments from the council? Brian?
For those of you who don't know, I work for Hestert's and this is just my personal opinion, this is not worse opinion, excuse me, but kids learn through play and if kids can't play, then, then it's really hard for them to learn. And the kids that would use the playground are the kids in the trailers or the apartments that may not have access to their own, like in their backyard or the front yard. So I vote to please open the playgrounds for the kids. Please let them learn. Please let them play.
Any other comments from the council? Julia and then Howard?
Thank you. I want to say that I really appreciate the public comments and several of you have stated that you want us to, you know, to listen to what the public is saying and, you know, I want to say that, you know, we are, but that sometimes the louder voices are ones that are asking us to open, but I do want you all to know that we also, I at least have gotten a lot of comments to please keep them closed. And I also want to say that while on the one hand, we do and we want to represent all the people, it is also our responsibility as elected officials to take on that additional information burden, to become, may not experts, but more informed on some of these issues. And I think that's what I've tried to do and really made sure to read up on these things and read up on the science of these issues and not just what other places are doing who have their own political challenges. I do want to say though, and so with those thoughts in mind, for public health reasons right now, the safest thing is to keep the playgrounds closed. It is very challenging to help, to have children be socially distant from one another, particularly on a playground. And, and that's of course even more difficult to monitor. There are two points though that really strike me as, one that might sway my vote in the other direction to go ahead and open the playground. And one is my concern hearing that people are leaving town. As much, part of the reason why we don't want to, or why I wouldn't want to open the playgrounds would be for public health reasons, right? You go and take your child there, they meet another child, that becomes, that child becomes transmitted, becomes contagious, brings that to their parents, and now we have community spread. But if people are leaving the community and going to areas that might even have spikes or higher increased rates, that actually harms the community even further, right? And so in that sense, I would rather people play in the playgrounds and stay in Vermillion than leave and play in other playgrounds and then bring those contagions back. My other concern is actually to a point that Brian brought up in that some of us are very privileged. I am able to have a playground in the backyard for my toddler, but I do recognize that not, many are not able to do that. And so that's my other concern. Still sitting here, I want to hear more about what other people think. I think that's very challenging, but I've taken enough time, but this is a challenging issue.
Howard?
Well, I feel, I made the motion when the last time the motion was made to open up the playground and I still feel the positive effects that we can have by opening up the playground. And I think the people in Vermillion are enough aware of the problems, that they will take caution and watch their children. We can't legislate everything by some council. We have to allow the people of the community to make the decisions. So I think our community is well enough of the problems that's involved. And despite, and the patients that we've had from the virus here in Vermillion are not in that age group that would be on the playground. So I'm very much still for opening up the playground and allowing the people to make their decision with their children.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If I may, I'd like to quickly take this opportunity to briefly give some background on myself. I'm the new face on this group and I realize there are a lot of folks out there who don't know who I am, but my background and my training are, as an economist, I hold advanced degrees in behavioral economics, which is basically economics and psychology, kind of why people do the things they do. And so my instinct is to look at data and trends and then to draw reasonable conclusions based on that type of evidence. And so in this situation, I go to the CDC to see the guidance and the conclusions that they offer. So when people, I think, talk about opening playground equipment and they're talking about wanting their kids to play and interact, one of the underlying reasons that I've been hearing is kind of a rumor, this type of faulty argument about wanting to build up a child's immunity to coronavirus. And I really want to tackle that head-on because this is not true and that's not what the science tells us. Coronavirus immunity does not last. The CDC's website specifically says that they just do not know if you are going to be protected from coronavirus after you are exposed the first time. What's happening is people are testing positive for coronavirus, they are then, some people are then recovering and then contracting the virus again. And there are even cases where people have contracted it three times. The bottom line is that I, what I've, like Julia has said, tried to study up on this, any immunity in the body from the virus does not last very long. And then your risk factor goes back, back to where you started from. The biggest concern to me though, is that if we're talking about, once you do, if you were to become reinfected, you are then immunocompromised because your body, especially if we're talking about younger children here, their body has already been weakened and taken a beating from their first infection. And being positively diagnosed any subsequent time with COVID means that you are immunocompromised and will be even harder to recover and fight off that infection. So for people who fall into this category, some have had symptoms that last up to 48 days. I'll stop there and let others have a chance to speak, but my main concern is this, trying to expose a child to the virus so they can build up immunity is a, is a very dangerous argument because that is not how this virus operates.
Thank you. First, I wanted to make sure to thank the Parks and Rec Department for the book walk that they've been doing and they've been trying to find creative ways to help meet the social needs and the activity needs of our community. As a parent, I love the creative solutions that you have been coming up with. And also the fire, or the hydrant parties that the fire department has been doing. So thank you to both groups. And I also wanted to thank the public for providing input. It's sometimes challenging when you see people complain on Facebook or in conversation, but they're not coming to us. And so it's always nice when they come directly to, to us and talk to us about their concerns. So I wanted to thank them. As far as Julia's point on the concern about people going to other communities, that is huge to me. I, I definitely understand the need to get kids out and active. It's a battle that we fight regularly in our house. And I'm not willing to take my kids to another town, but I understand what some people are and I, it scares me that they could be bringing things back. So we could, you know, keep our germs together, our herd together, that would be, I guess, the better of two peoples. And that's as far as the playgrounds go. I have a lot of concerns about basketball and we haven't really talked about that. That is a higher-risk activity on the CDC, or a lot, what a lot of the experts have put out. And so I really hope that we are voting on these two things separately. But when we are, when we talk about younger children, I can see some of the benefit of playgrounds being open versus continuing to keep them closed. That's all.
Any other comments from the council?
I think a number of us are pretty torn on this. I think had this been on the, on the agenda on Monday, we, you know, I think there's probably a good chance that it passed. I don't necessarily think that this was something that necessitated a special meeting. I do think that we're likely to see a spike and, you know, the council is going to be meeting again in a little over seven days and might be looking at a spike right after we've decided to do this. And I think that's more problematic. I hope those of you that felt motivated enough to call a special meeting three days after our regular meeting on this will respond similarly to public health situations that we face, which I think are perhaps more pressing than this particular issue. We've got a number of really beautiful parks in this community that have been open the entire time. We have never closed and locked a park. Our parks are more than the playgrounds and it's unfortunate with the amount of time and effort that we put into maintaining these beautiful open spaces that we sort of act like they're not even there. With that said, we do know a lot more about surface contamination than we did when we first started, which is one of the reasons why it's considered a lower-risk activity. I think there is an assumption with that, that there is an ability to social distance and mask wear, which, you know, was referenced before in some of the recommendations. I think it's unlikely that that's going to happen and I do want to bring up what I brought up many times ago about this issue, that we have a huge population of unsupervised children in this community whose parents will not be there to tell them to social distance. So I think it's important that the community understands that if we decide to do this, we absolutely cannot guarantee anyone's safety. And that's what we're saying, is that we cannot guarantee any level of safety.
Anything else from the council? A motion?
I would move approval of opening up playgrounds on city parks, not including, not including basketball courts at this time. Well, I think we should, I'd like Lindsay's suggestion that we should consider them separately.
Do we need to? Do you want to add a stipulation of signage?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah. Silence to encourage social distancing.
I would second that.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
I'd like to encourage parents to accompany their children to the playground at least the first couple of times and be part of it so that they know what's going on and so the cautions can be taken so that they have less of a chance of coming up with a virus.
Can I make other, one other comment, Mayor?
Sure. Go ahead.
I'm also, obviously I'm making the motion, so I'm supporting it, but if we do have a spike as a result of 4th of July, kind of irresponsible socializing, then I'm going to encourage this council to have this item in the next meeting as well. And if there's a spike, then I think it's, you know, I would, I would vote to close the playgrounds again. So I just wanted to make that clear.
Go ahead, Lindsay.
I'm curious, would that require the five-day or would that be because it's more of a recommendation to the park department, Parks and Rec Department? Would that be something that we can vote on each meeting?
John?
I think-
That wouldn't require a second meeting, a second reading, correct?
I think the question is, could the council act on if you wanted to close some item that you had recently opened or have opened at the next meeting? I think that's what the question was and I would say, since it's a, and I'm looking at the city attorney for confirmation, but if it's a city facility, I believe that the city council's ability to open and close those as need be, that it wouldn't have to be, be in an ordinance, a motion would suffice. And I got a head nod yes on that, so.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Do we have a second?
Yes, we have a motion and a second. So if there's no further discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye at the roll.
Helwig?
No.
Holland?
Aye.
Humphrey?
Aye.
Jenna Wine?
Reluctant aye.
Lettler?
No.
Price?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor, call your wise.
No. Motion carries. Moving on to discussion about the basketball courts, is there any comment from- Motion carries. Moving on to discussion about the basketball courts, is there any comment from the council or desired action?
I would move that we also open the basketball courts. I feel that there are courts available already if necessary. And the group of people actually should be more responsible than the toddlers because they know exactly what they suspected in the results of that. So I feel it's equally as safe to open the basketball courts. And maybe a little bit more so than the playgrounds. So I'd like to make the motion that we open the basketball courts also.
And I second Rich's motion. That's a very good point about, they're adults or they're older, they should know better. So definitely.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Julia?
An apology to the crying baby. If we open the basketball courts, do we have any areas, I guess, where they're set up as games? Because I'm concerned about, more about games than, you know, two, three people doing a pickup game rather than like, you know, a ten-person full-on game.
That might be a question for Jim, if he's still there.
Yes, I am here. Could you please restate the question?
She was, she was basically asking whether there is a way to make it so that it would only more be set up for like shooting as opposed to games with two baskets.
Yes, I mean, just thinking off the top of my head, right now, there's a few courts that have multiple baskets on, you know, on each side, on a traditional court setup that I guess we could only put up one side of the hoops. And that would, I guess, diminish the opportunity to do like a full-court basketball, but that would not have any effect on like a three-on-three or a half-court games. So I guess, yes, no on the full court, we could probably help alleviate, but the three-on-three or the half-court, we could not really monitor.
Any other comments from? Julia, sorry.
Would the person who made the motion be interested in doing that option?
Rich?
Yeah, it's okay with me. Open up, in other words, all the courts is half-court. So Jim earlier said that there are no indoor courts involved. They are closed, and I guess that could remain that way. I think outdoor courts, you're safer than indoor courts, as far as that. But in the effort to get something open, I would accept that as well.
Brian, are you amenable to that as a second?
Definitely, yes.
Okay. Steve?
Jim, I also have a question regarding games. It does seem to me that games are a little, a riskier proposition. Could we have signs? I know that people can ignore signs, though. Can we have signs that say, no games, three-on-three, five-on-five? I don't even know if you need to specify. But can we have some sign that has, says, no games allowed, shooting allowed, something like that?
Of course, we could make those. I don't, I question about how they would be enforced, I guess.
Right.
We can encourage no games being played, but I think as far as enforcement side of that, that would be awfully difficult.
Yeah, I understand that.
Rich?
Well, Jim, could we just have to put a sign out saying, maintain social distancing? Because that will certainly eliminate games. It's rather tough to play basketball six feet apart.
It won't eliminate them, though.
But I think that would solve the problem.
Yeah, I mean, we would be happy to put whatever signage and how the verbiage you would like it to be. I would probably need a little bit to visit with someone, at least on the council, to see some different options of what you're looking at. I mean, I'm getting no games to social distancing to the half-court. I, it doesn't matter to me. I just want to be consistent with all the courts that we do have and then also have the approval of council before we move forward with any signs.
Travis?
I just kind of, obviously, if I've felt that the playground should not be open, I definitely feel that the basketball court should not be open. And so I would just like to actually say out loud for the record that from what, from my perspective or how I'm thinking about this is that I want to emphasize that the CDC has not changed its guidance on this. That if you engage in these types of activities like playing basketball, which is listed as a moderately high, borderline, very high-risk activity, you still are encouraged to follow CDC guidelines. And that involves, please wear a mask, practice physical distancing, wash your hands often, and do not gather with people you don't live with. These are the CDC guidelines. And I don't know how you play basketball and still follow the rules that are designed to minimize not only your own health risk, but the risk of everyone around you. So I just wanted to kind of be on the record as, as that's where I'm coming from.
Thank you, Travis. Steve?
I think that's an absolutely fair point, and I think playing basketball is the risk here. Shooting a basketball by yourself or with one other person at a basket is not, I don't think, a risky behavior, even in the CDC guidelines. So the, you know, the issue is, if we allow a basketball court to be open, there is no way we can prevent games being played, whether they be half-court games or full-court games. The thing that the council will have to decide is, is that risk of games happening from time to time worth having basketball hoops open for students, for kids or adults who just want to shoot baskets by themselves or with a friend at the court? And it'll be a whole different thing when USD students return. Because games will, right currently, while the basketball court's been open, there weren't a ton of games happening at the Prentice Park Courts. There will be more games happening once USD comes back. So it may be something we want to revisit, but I just kind of want to lay out the context of what playing basketball in the CDC is people guarding each other closely and breathing hard on one another, which obviously is a risky thing.
Catherine?
I don't feel like we need to dictate to Jim what the signs need to say. I just think that if we look at it from an educational perspective, the average person using the basketball court probably doesn't differentiate between playing a game and shooting baskets with your roommate, right? But we want to make that message clear that the, you know, the guidelines do differentiate between those things of being in close contact with people you don't live with, a group of people you don't live with, and breathing and sweating on each other is, is a different activity than shooting baskets with your roommate, you know? And if, if the signage that we prepare could be in that sort of educational framework, like, here's the risk factor of playing a game, which is extremely high, and here's the risk factor of just shooting baskets, you know? I think that that, if that gives Jim the, the guidance of the kind of message that we're trying to educate the public about, that's, that's just what I, I don't want to tell him what to put on the signs. I'm just saying that maybe that's the, the perspective we need to take is to be educating the public about the risk factors that, that they are encountering on the basketball courts based on their activities they choose to do.
Rich?
Jim, just to make sure that I understood correctly, we're talking now only about outdoor courts. Is that correct?
That's correct. The only indoor courts that we supervise would be at the National Guard Armory. And we are working with the National Guard there and have heated their request to try and keep activities outside of that facility in this time being. They just don't feel comfortable opening it up for anything, not just basketball, but for auctions and pancake feeds or whatever else it may be. So there's been no activity inside the Armory and will not change for another extended period of time.
I agree with that because that is much higher risk. Thank you.
Lindsay?
Like Travis, I just want to like reiterate that I don't think that basketball is a good idea. We had, it was really before my time on the council, but the Health Sciences Advisory and USD Health Sciences, they put contact sports as a high risk. And basketball would be a contact sport to me. And I just don't think that there, there's enough to say that it's only going to be shooting hoops. You know, people are, they want to socialize, they're going to go use it if it's there. And that concerns me, so that's all.
Yeah, I guess my feeling is if, to support it, I believe, is to say we're opening it up because we have no way to, again, to monitor. And people will use it the way that they have used it. And I don't believe that any amount of signage at this point would make a difference if folks have decided to go and start a game with five people. I don't believe that they're going to get there and go, oh, social distancing, what's this new concept? I haven't heard of this one before, you know, because they saw a sign. That decision had already been made to, you know, share an object and pass it around and be in close proximity. So I think to move forward is to accept the whole thing. I don't think that there's a mitigation that can really happen here without park police, which is unfair. I also think that if we say it's only, you know, for shooting, then we better be prepared for people to be calling the police or Parks and Rec or whoever on groups of people playing games. Because the folks that are contacting us and saying, don't open up anything, are going to be alarmed by that and they're going to want to be able to report it. And we don't have any way of, we can't send police in to break up basketball games either. You know, obviously, we, there's a lot of things that we can't control as far as gatherings and different things like that. But I think this is especially an area that, number one, is public property, and so we bear some responsibility for. But also, again, is beyond our ability to, to monitor or to, to really shape the activities that are going on there versus some of the other organized Parks and Rec activities, of which there are many. Again, it's unfortunate that we've gotten some feedback that there aren't summer activities when, again, I believe that there have been so many folks that have been working really hard this summer to provide activities for kids.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify at the roll.
Jenna Wine?
No.
Helwig?
No.
Holland?
Yes.
Humphrey?
Yes.
Lettler?
No.
Price?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor, call your wives.
No. Motion carries. Is there anything further to come before the council?
Move adjourned then.
Second?
Got a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor, please signify at the roll.
Helwig?
Aye.
Holland?
Aye.
Humphrey? Jenna Wine?
Aye.
Lettler?
Aye.
Price?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor, call your wives.
Aye. We are adjourned.